Dixon to lead the pledge allegiance and place your man standing for a moment of silence.
A to allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated.
Amen.
Okay, approval agenda, do I hear your motion?
Salute.
All right, second, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Recognition.
Madam Chair, members of the board, first I'd like to ask Coach Carroll and Coach Carroll to come up. I think they're both here. Recently we had the indoor track team compete at the state competition, and I think last year, how many competitors did we have in the indoor track team?
We just had Cassidy, she was kind of our pilot program to kind of get it started, and so she was the one that kind of built that foundation, and then we kind of went from there, we had a lot of interest from the season, outdoor season was very successful, so we had a lot of kids that were interested and that didn't do another winter sport to go ahead and do indoor, so we went ahead and gathered those numbers and presented it to the board.
Now, I think this year, I don't have it written down, but I think we came within two, two and a half points of winning the state championship.
Yeah.
So, we are very proud of you, I'm gonna let you go through, and I think you've got the list of all your athletes and you can recognize them, but several state championships, individual and team, and we are very proud of you all and those student athletes.
Thank you. So, on behalf of the Lee High Track and Field Program, we would like to thank Mr. Dean and the fellow school board members for inviting us here this evening, as well as your continued support and recognition of these student athletes. We are what we repeatedly do. Excellence then is not an act, but a habit. The Lee High Track and Field Program has adapted this vision that encompasses everything that we believe in as a team, and it is a standard that we uphold ourselves on. The 2024 indoor track and field season highlighted a boys' team regional title, girls' team regional runner-up title, and a girls' team state runner-up performance. During the state indoor track and field championships, we had eight all-state athletes and four state champions, one of those being the four-by-two relay, and the other an individual state championship by Savannah Parsons in the triple jump. The following list highlights the accomplishments of the 13 athletes that represented Lee High School at the state meet. First, we have Savannah Parsons. Yes, if you'll come up, ladies and gentlemen. So Savannah Parsons was the individual state champion in the triple jump, she was part of the four-by-two state champion team, which I would say that four-by-two team, if anybody was able to watch that team, it should have been on the highlights of the ESPN Top 10 Highlights, because it was an amazing performance. She also was fifth, which was all-state, in the long jump, she was second, which was all-state, in the high jump, and she was part of the four-by-four team, which placed eighth, and that was also all-state. Next, we have Cassidy Hammond, she was part of the four-by-two state champion team. In long jump, she placed second and was all-state, in triple jump, she was seventh, which was all-state, fifty-five hurdles, she placed second, which was all-state, and fifty-five open, which she was eighth, which was all-state. Next, we have Marissa Lillisay, she was part of the four-by-four team, that placed eighth and was all-state. Another fun fact about the four-by-four team is they were actually in one of what they like to say, not the slower heat, but it was the first heat, and they actually came out and beat two other heats of teams to be all-state, so that was pretty impressive. I think they maybe were coming, sitting in fourteenth and placed all-state. Julia Britton, she was part of the four-by-four team, that placed eighth and was all-state. Bailey Bettina, which was part of the four-by-two team, which was a state champion, and also the four-by-four, which placed eighth, which was all-state. Michaela Edens, she was a part of the four-by-two state champion team as well. For our boys... Yeah, so girl, yeah, we congratulate, yeah, good girl chance. And for our boys, anytime, you know, when you're looking at making it to the state meet and that level, that performance, you have to have elite performances. So, all these athletes, both the female and the males, they did what they needed to do to get to that point, and they performed very well in the state competition. We have Stephen May, he ran the three hundred, and he ran on part of the four-by-two team, which placed eleven. We have Connor Early, which was long jump, he placed fifth and was all-state. He also participated in the triple jump, the four-by-two, and the four-by-four. We have Ellen Grace, he ran in the three hundred, the five hundred, and the four-by-four. And all these performances were in the top twenty performances, was pretty cool when you're talking about both Class One and Two in the state of Virginia. We have Elijah Stafford, he ran the thousand meters in the four-by-four, he was eighth and all-state in the thousand. Again, another fun fact about Elijah, he was the last man in the field, and he came out being all-state eighth as a freshman, so that's pretty impressive. Andrew Holmes was part of the four-by-two team. Andrew Rutherford was part of the four-by-two team. And Jacob Leonard was part of the four-by-four team.
Have them come out and stand.
What if I have girls and boys?
Yeah, so girls, yeah, they'll come back up for us.
Yeah, just line up nicely. Girls, come on up.
I think it's important to remember, this is indoor track, which we do not have an indoor track facility, you all practice out in the building or on the track, and I think you all had competitions outside during indoor track competition season, and so, very proud of you all and the student athletes.
Yeah, thank you so much. George Sheen, all the effort, all the job, great job.
And to conclude, you know, with all this being said, we're not finished yet, we still have a job to do, and the outdoor season brings expectations and some redemption. The girls' team is hungry than ever, and their sights are set on taking home a regional and state outdoor team title. The boys look to add an outdoor regional team title to their indoor team title. We are super proud of these athletes and look forward to seeing what they accomplish during the outdoor track and field season. Good job.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I think next we have, do we have Coach Garcia and Coach Hughes with us tonight?
Excuse me.
Just you, come on up.
Coach Hughes, he had a doctor's appointment today.
Thank you, ma'am.
Very well.
Think he's gonna talk about the Lee High Wrestling State Qualifiers.
We only had, well, last year we had Eli go to state and made it to the blood round last year, which is the round before you place. If you make it to the blood round, you win, you place, you lose, you go home. Eli suffered a good match, and he had a good match in that, in that blood round last year, but this year in the blood round he pulled through, ended up fifth place this year, which is really hard to do. You know, I think wrestling's one of the most grueling and toughest sports in the world. Not only, it's the only sport that you have to watch your diet, you have to work out every day on your own, you have to run on your own, you have to practice at home on your own, it demands a lot of you. But these boys, you know, we had seven last year, I think ten this year come out, and we surprised a lot of people by wrestling this year. If we could just get more kids out, you know, it'd be a lot better program. But we had these three go to state this year, super proud of them, they had great years. John Card. Eli Penix, who placed fifth.
Good job, buddy.
And Owen, Owen Penix.
Good job, buddy.
If you will see them all, whatever weekend you all have the tournament somewhere, it's usually not home, I think you all travel quite a bit.
Yes, sir, we don't, we only have one home match a year, so, you know, it's rough, we have to travel where we go, and if we want to compete with these other schools, we have to go to these tournaments. Some of these, you go to the state tournament, you see kids up there with records of fifty and one, and forty and, forty-five and one, and we've got like thirty matches, but we have to compete at those tournaments to get those matches. If we don't compete, if we don't go to those tournaments, we may get twenty matches, so we're very thankful that we get to attend those tournaments. Thank you all.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Great job.
Next, we have, I think I saw him come in, Coach Hoseable, with Thomas Walker, who this is their first year of having a wrestling team, and I'm gonna let him talk about, I think he had two state qualifiers, a male and a female.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a, it's really a good experience, you know, to be, because this is my first year as a high school coach as well, you know, and, which I've helped out with Lee High a few years ago, would come into the wrestling room and would wrestle around with them to help them out, but, but, it, you know, it's just showing them what to do, and, do you want, you want me to bring them up?
Yes, I think we've got certificates for them, I think Ms. Belcher's got certificates, if you wanna call them out and bring them up and talk a little bit about them.
Yeah, so, I'll call, I'll do ladies first.
Okay.
And I'll bring up Gabby Dixon, she is, you know, she stuck it out through the year, we, we actually had, I think, four girls total that started, you know, on our wrestling team, but she was the only one of our girls that stuck it out through the whole season. And, and so she, this is Gabby Dixon, and she, she, she did, she put all that she had on the mat, and that's what it took, so, if you got, I don't know if you, are you guys applauding? Alright, so do give her a hand. Then I'll bring up Brendan Hensley, we call him Tater, which, they, they said that the reason why they called him Tater is because when he was born, his head looked like a potato. He's a brute, and he, he picked up really well on the technique, he would suck up that, he's like a sponge on the wrestling mat, he would just suck up that technique, and he really, he also put it all out on the mat. He was wrestling for fifth place, and he, did you tear that bicep, or just strain it real bad? He strained his bicep real bad, and he went into overtime and lost, almost got taked down, but the, but the guy grabbed his arm with that strained bicep and pulled him over and was able to get two points over him. But it was a really good match, and, but he made off-state, and I wish we had him back for next year, and Gabby, by the way, is just a freshman, so she's still got three more seasons with us on the mat, so, we're looking forward to what is, what the future of Thomas Walker Wrestling holds.
How many did you have come out altogether? How many, how many athletes did you have come out altogether?
Altogether, well, at one point we had twenty-something, like probably about twenty-three or so, but, you know, the nature of the sport is, it's tough, it's difficult, mentally challenging, because like in football or basketball or any other team sport, you go out there and it's a whole team, you know, against another whole team, and if, if the team loses, it's everybody's fault, if the team wins, everybody gets credit, but in wrestling, you're out there all by yourself, that's one person against one other person, and nobody can, you can't tag the team and swap out, and, you know, you're there from the beginning of the match to the end of the match, and it's six, six minutes of grueling, you know, physically, you'll get scored in places you didn't think you could get scored. But, but that's, it's, it's the nature of the sport, mentally challenging causes people to, to give up, but if they stick it out, it's also very, very rewarding, so.
Coach, we're proud of you, and we're proud of what you did in the first year, and to have two state qualifiers and one to finish, I believe, sixth, I think that's very impressive.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Okay, next up is public comment.
I got a little more recognition.
I'm sorry.
You're good, the Virginia School Board Association Art Contest winners. I think we got the artwork on display right over there in front of Ms. Combs. The elementary winner was Alice Potts, from third grade, from St. Charles. The middle school winner was Anna Marie Graham, seventh grader from Pennington Middle. And the high school winner was Patricia Biggie, twelfth grader at Thomas Walker High School, so I wanted to recognize them as well, and at the next regional Virginia School Board Association meeting, we will take the artwork there and compete against the divisions across the region, but I wanted to recognize those, and I asked you to take a chance to look at those, the wonderful artwork that they're, that they had. So, are any of those students here tonight? I didn't think I saw any of those come in, but we've got certificates, we'll get to those. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And thank you, art students. Okay, now we're ready for public comment, if we have any, make sure that you do not mention any names, please. Any public comment? And anyone that's here for recognition wants to leave, you're welcome to leave. Okay, so any board comments? Okay, we'll go on to the consent agenda. A, approval of minutes from the March fourteenth, twenty twenty-four budget meeting, a regular meeting, and the March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four public hearing for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. B, approval of claims and expenditures. C, special education annual plan for twenty-four, twenty-five, update to hit start policy, active supervision, approval of Lee County Career and Technical Center annual plan for two, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. F, approval of update to Lee County School Board policy, GBE slash JFCH slash KGC. G, approval to pursue offering a program of visual and performing arts within the gifted program. H, approval of disposal of surplus property for school board policy, DN, disposal of surplus items. I, approval of summer school dates, May the twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, through June the third, twenty twenty-four, eight-thirty a.m. to one p.m. J, approval of summer work hours, May the twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, through July the eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. Item K, approval of authorization for the division superintendent to fill vacancies existing or occurring between April the eleventh, twenty twenty-four, through May the ninth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll answer any questions anyone has on any of those items.
Do I hear a motion?
On the quick, real quick, the summer work hours, I see the dates, but one of the times.
It'll be Monday through Thursday, six to four, or seven to five.
Okay.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Alright, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, reports of the board? Okay, on to reports of the division superintendent.
Madam Chair, I ask you that you look through the Kingsport Times News drawing cards, we always have those in there, and I ask you to look at those. Appreciate what our students do, get published with that, and you know, it takes a lot of courage to do that writing, get it published in the paper. Enrollment, my computer's went to sleep here. Enrollment is in your packet, I want to make sure I don't tell you wrong, I think we went down a little bit, I just want to make sure I got the number correct. A lot of that is still those foster students that we are going from week to week, and sometimes day to day, that it fluctuates quite a bit. Currently at twenty-seven eighty-nine, that's down from twenty-eight oh six the previous month, still above the twenty-seven ten that we base the budget on, and I think Ms. Bell Gardner is working to get our ADM finalized, so we can kind of see if we would need to get some more money from the locality, because our enrollment is above the budgeted number, so, but it's still, enrollment still looks good. Operations update and transportation update is in your packet, if you've got any questions on those, still a lot of stuff going on across the division. Health insurance, I need to talk to you all about that. We had our health insurance committee come together, and we worked with our health insurance broker, and I think I've said before, we're not a very, and this is their words, a marketable group because of our claims in the past, so we had two possibilities that came forward this year, is remaining where we're at with the self-funded anthem package, or the local choice, which is the health insurance that was authorized by the General Assembly. We got those numbers, and we have run the premiums, and we asked the committee to vote, and it was not an unanimous vote. The majority of the committee asked that we stick with the self-funded, even with the understanding that we are gonna have to raise rates on probably both the employer and the employee. To give you all a little background on that, the insurance fund had close to three million dollars back in the start of FY twenty, and I think at the end of March, Ms. Belcher, tell me if I'm incorrect, we were just a little bit below half a million dollars. We've had increases in the past, and the board has asked that, you know, we tack on those, those increases and they not go to the employees, and that has ate at the reserves that we have. So, the insurance brokers say, and anthem says, that we would need to raise rates, and even if you went with the local choice, rates would go up. The biggest difference between the local choice option and the self-funded option is we have more flexibility with the self-funded option. With the local choice, it's, you're more like a number. If, for one reason or another, someone forgets to make a change within the grace period that you have, like if you, if someone passes away, if you have a birth, if you were to get a divorce, that there's a period of time that you have to make those changes. With self-funded, we can administratively help people out with those changes, if you go local choice, you're just a number, and I think that's the biggest reason the majority of the committee voted that way. The other big issue with local choice is they have a set group of categories. With self-funded, we kind of have our own group, but with local choice, you, you go with their groups, and we would have people who would go probably from paying approximately three hundred, three hundred and fifty dollars a month for insurance, they would have to go to the family plan, and it would be over twelve hundred dollars a month. And I also think that's part of why some of the committee voted to go with it. It would be lower premiums for like an employee only, if you went local choice, but you would have approximately fifty employees that would get hit with that nine hundred dollar-ish a month increase. So, local choice has a set deadline, that we have to tell them whether or not we're gonna do it, and the committee is, has recommended and voted that we stick with what we've got, and unless you all tell me otherwise, we will try to make those changes and make that work, and hopefully, we will become more marketable. You know, we're trying to get more information about health insurance and self-funded, and some people don't know what that means, that, you know, if you go to the pharmacy and your copay is fifty dollars, some people still think that's all they pay for that insurance and that prescription, but when you're self-funded, they pay fifty dollars, but the account will pay for the prescription, and whether it's five hundred dollars or five thousand dollars, that's what we gotta get people to understand. And I think we're doing a better job, I think we, we're getting that word out there, I think the, having the committee, and I know they are, they are putting that word out there and making sure people understands it, but that's the committee's recommendation. Any questions on the update on health insurance? Another update I wanted to give you was on the Virginia retirement system, the credible compensation for combined contracts. There was a bill at the General Assembly that they were pushing to get this done, but they withdrew the bill when they determined that VRS could do it theirself if they just changed the wording in their handbook. And what this would mean is like if you have a teacher who is also a bus driver, in the past, VRS would only allow you to take the higher of the two, which would be the teacher pay, to go toward your retirement. They are now allowing us to combine those for people's retirement, so I think both of you ladies, teachers and bus drivers, so your retirement could have been increased by the amount of the bus driving contract, which I think will help a lot of people, and it might attract some future bus drivers. And it can also, we're working on it, that could be cooked bus driver, custodian bus driver, and I think it will just help us possibly get more bus drivers, because it will help them later with their retirement. But they are updating the VRS handbook to allow us to do that. So, next year, we may have a slightly larger salary scale packet, because you might have just a teacher salary scale, you might have a bus driver salary scale, and then you might have a teacher slash bus driver salary scale, and for any other group that we can put in there to help, help individuals. Another update, I think I've been trying to get you all some information, too, the governor has sent over two hundred amendments to the budget, to the General Assembly. The General Assembly meets again starting next Wednesday, typically it's a one-day session, but I think the Constitution allows up to ten days for that. He has sent out amendments to the budget that they sent him, he didn't veto the budget, he asked that they, you know, consider the two hundred some amendments, and, you know, one of them would be a three percent increase for teacher pay for the next two years, and just some other funding, and I haven't went through the entire budget, but I mean, I think it's the General Assembly, I just wanted to give you all an update, it's still a work in progress, just like the local budget that, you know, we, we approved at the budget hearing that I sent to Mr. Poe and the board supervisors, I told them that it probably have to be amended once the state fully passes the budget. Couple of things I would like to make you all aware of, April is Autism Awareness Month, April the fourth was School Librarian Appreciation Day, April the first through the fifth was National Assistant Principals Week, April the third was Paraprofessional Appreciation Day, April is also Workforce Readiness Month, and designated April the sixteenth as Workforce Readiness Day, and April the twenty-fourth is Administrative Professional Day, so we appreciate all of the people that have been following those categories and what they do daily, and for our students. Any questions on my reports? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any unfinished business? There's not any?
Yeah, I just want to bring up something I should have brought up in reports to the board, when did we go to bed school? Like a week after our last meeting or something?
Yes, I believe so.
So, we, I was able to invite some, some Lee County students down to meet with the governor at the bed school and have dinner, also invited Mr. Dean and his wife, and so I invited three children, students at Thomas Walker and their families, and then I invited two students, plus my daughter from Lee High, but it was pretty, it was pretty cool, because they got to get their picture, move to the governor, talk to them about what they wanted to do in the future, and, you know, according to what grade they were in, where they were going to college and everything, so, I hope they all enjoyed it, and I think they did, so, I just wanted to mention those kids had that opportunity to meet the governor recently.
And I think I talked to some of the parents, and they were very appreciative of you inviting them, and, you know, the opportunity to meet the governor, and he did take time to talk to them, and I think they were, they enjoyed it, and I think they went and looked at some of the stuff at the bed school while they were there, so, millions of dollars on campus there that they're spending.
Thank you, Rob, for giving them that opportunity.
Yeah, Mackenzie Daniels was very appreciative to that, so.
Okay, action discussion items. A, action if any to issue requests for proposals for the following bid process for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, propane, copy paper, dairy products.
Madam Chair, Ms. Belcher and I are asking that we allow, or have that bid process, propane is one that, the companies will not typically sign a multi-year contract because of fluctuation in the price, copy paper surprisingly fluctuates quite a bit, and then dairy products, the same milk fluctuates quite a bit, so we're asking that we send out, be allowed to send out those bids.
Mr. Dean, do we, are our tanks, are all our propane tanks out?
Not all of them, the big tanks we do own, the smaller tanks, some of those are still Lee propane, the, like, the two hundred pound tanks, but the big tanks are the school systems. Any motions? Yes. Salute.
Here's a second to the motion.
Second.
Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. B, action if any to change school district lines.
Madam Chair, I had mentioned this to you all sometime in the past, and with the decreased enrollment at St. Charles, what we're looking at doing with your all's approval would be backing up St. Charles backing up St. Charles district lines to include right and left-hand Port Valley. This would increase, um, the enrollment up at St. Charles, possibly up to some, somewhere around 10 students. It would fairly be easy to do because both of those roads are in the proximity of St. Charles. I talked to Mr. Sampson at the bus shop, he believes we can do that relatively without causing a lot of issues with transportation. And the other item I would mention, it's not really a change, but, um, Pennington is supposed to be divided. If you go through Pennington that way, the left side of Pennington should go to Dryden and the right side should go to Elk Knopf. We have had some families that have realized if they will just walk across the road, they're going to the school that they shouldn't be going to and have slipped through the cracks. And we are going to with, unless you all tell me otherwise, try to make sure they understand which side of the road they live on is where they're supposed to be going to school. And some of it, I think, has been they get upset with someone at the school and they realize that the bus on the other side of the road goes to a different school and it's real easy for them to, to move. And we're still providing that transportation and sometimes it's hard for us to keep up because you make them mad, one day they go to one school, they go there for a few weeks, they get mad and then they decide they want to go back because they're wasn't as bad as the other school and vice versa. So we're just trying to enforce that and change the line at St. Charles. What we would do is go ahead and notify those parents of the change. We would let them know that the transportation that we would provide would be going to St. Charles. If they wanted to take their own kids to another school and it didn't cause a burden or a, you know, we might have to get another teacher, they could do that if they wanted to stick with the school that they were at. So that's what we're asking on the change of the district lines.
On the right-hand Port Valley, would that turn all the way out?
Close to patio, yes. Probably what we would do is send the bus and have them start up that way and then they would come out by Lehman Field and be able to go straight to St. Charles.
How many total kids does it affect?
Approximately 10.
Do you know what grades are in? In other words, do we have kids that going to have one more year at one of those schools?
There, there are a couple that, that could and that's why we were saying that, or we could let it know that we might be doing it next year. Uh, that's why I wanted to bring it to you all because I think there will probably be some parents that said, my kids went to Dryden for two years and now you're making them look.
I wouldn't think about it, just from my standpoint.
We can, I mean, we can definitely table it. Because, I mean, school doesn't start back till August, so we would have time, I just wanted to get that on your all's radar. And I can get you the exact.
I'd like to see your breakdown.
The number and the grades.
That would be good to have. It sounds good, but I agree, it's table. Do I hear a motion? Do we have to make a motion to table?
Second.
Okay. All right, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries to table. Okay, C, action if any to approve renewal of current pest control and related service contracts.
Madam Chair, I think it should only be, uh, Ms. Belcher asked me if I'm correct, should only be pest control? So that's our mistake, so. Will, do we need to amend that agenda and take that off or?
No, you can approve pest control as you can.
Both of those have the option of renewing it for up to four years. Pest control said they were good renewing it. Uh, we have not received the answer yet from related services, so we're still waiting on those, but I would ask that you go ahead and renew the pest control for the next year.
I'll make a motion to review pest control contract.
Okay, do I hear a second? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, Mr. Hance, would you read for closed session?
I'll make a motion that we go into closed session to discuss personnel under Code of Virginia Section 2.2-3711A1, student discipline under Code of Virginia Section 2.2-3711A2, and pending and threatened litigation under Code of Virginia Section 2.2-3711A7.
I'll say.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? We're in now and.